Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, May 6, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the planning board secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the board. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure. Please join me to salute the flag.
I will now take roll call. James Bonanno.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Eric Gallobo.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman.
Here.
John Moore.
Here.
Daniel Shenemeo is absent today. Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Vice Chair Gunnin.
Here.
Chairwoman Kerzak.
Here. I'd just like to take one moment to welcome a new member of our board, alternate one, Jeremy Hoffman. Welcome.
Welcome, Jeremy.
The first item we have on the agenda is resolution for Springfield Ave.
The members of the board that are eligible are James Bonanno, Councilwoman Clayton, Eric Gallobo, Jim Henry, Mayor Moore, Jennifer Souter, Daniel Shenemeo. Oh, all of you. I'll start from the top, then. Okay. James Bonanno.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Eric Gallobo.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Daniel Shenemeo absent. Mike Gunnin.
Yes.
And Barbara Kerzak.
Yes. All right. The first item we have on the agenda is the Asbury Park Beach Club, 1500 Ocean Avenue. We're looking to carry that to June 17, 2024, without further notice.
There's no notice required.
No notice required? Okay. So I'd just like to get a motion to carry to June 17, 2024.
Move it.
I'll second.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Eric Gallobo.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Mike Gunnin.
Yes.
Barbara Kerzak.
Thank you. Next application on our schedule is 900 Madison. We need to, there are a few people that have to be recused.
Yes.
Go ahead. Yvonne is out.
Jen Souter. I'm going to recuse myself for a work conflict.
Okay.
Anyway, why don't you give your appearance, then I'll bring up the date on who's eligible for the vote.
If I may, Andrew Karas, we have the applicant Den Holtz Acquisition LLC.
Now, the original, the original members voted in favor of the project. It was a screw back. John, Jim, Jennifer. So down to two. So I got, I got all of these participants participating, for sure, in my mind. Yeah, it's almost. Also, we just, I've got to give you a poll.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure that the people that are listening tonight have listened to the prior hearings if we're going to take a vote.
Yeah. And as everyone.
Eric and Mike Gunnin both watched. They were the members that had not.
I'm sorry, Eric and Mike.
Eric and Mike Gunnin.
And this was the one where, you remember, like, the original approval? There was three planning board meetings, but only two of them were on AP-TV. So I watched two of them, and then one of them was just a transcript.
Barbara, have you?
Yes, yes, I'm caught up.
Okay, so that's three.
Number nine or less, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's four.
He's brand new.
Yeah, all right. All right. So you could participate, but you just won't be able to, because you haven't. Yeah, tonight. If we don't vote, if we don't vote tonight, for whatever reason, and you want to phone up on your reasons, then you would be. You have, you've got one member.
Very good. We're set to go.
Floor shows.
All right. This, from what the, I don't know what the board recalls, we're back here on a continuation of a hearing. There had been a prior approval of this project. The project is located at 900 901 Madison Avenue, two lots, it's block 603, or a number of lots, lots 3 to 9, block 607, lot 8. Two buildings are being proposed within Springfield Avenue Development Area. It's the gateway zone. We had quite a number, at least a few hearings on this matter. It's an amendment of a prior approval. We've come back tonight in response to the board's comments at the last hearing that we held on this matter. We're going to address those comments tonight, and I'm hoping that we can finish up tonight with the application. If I may. All right, we're going to start off with our architect.
So you're going to get everything hooked up. And then I'll swear if I stay after you're done.
Very good.
Want to go and sworn in again?
Yes.
Yep.
So please raise your hand. I'll swear or affirm the testimony about the case of this matter. See, we should tell truth to another person.
Yes.
Please prestate your name for the record and spell out.
Lance, L-A-N-C-E, Blake, B-L-A-K-E.
Okay. And you are, qualifications haven't changed, you're still a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, that's correct.
Since February?
Mm-hmm.
So, Lance, let me, me swear.
Oh, sure.
Please, write in, please, officer, testify. You can state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Robert Duro, board engineer.
Good. Okay, ready to go.
Lance, as a result of the hearings and the common second hearing, last time we were before this board, you'd made certain revisions to your plans, am I correct?
That's correct.
These are the architectural plans that had been presented to this board, am I correct?
Yes.
What I'd like to do is bring those up on the board, and then we're going to identify the plans as we go through them.
All right. Where do you know what exhibit we're up to?
Have we a A4, am I correct?
Yes, that would be A4.
Okay, fine. Just bring that up on the screen.
Let's start with 901.
All right. What I'm going to ask you to do is first identify that, and then let's get the last revision date for the record.
So, this is 3D rendering Asbury Park Building 900. Latest revision date is, I can't see that. 3/29/2024.
Taking a look at what's been marked as A4 of identification, why don't we go through the changes that you've incorporated into these plans from the last time that we were here?
Sure, sure. So, basically, just to give you a broad overview, the changes that we made primarily was to eliminate all the balconies in the back of the building, from usable balconies to Julietts. So there is, basically, it's, you know, anywhere from, you know, a foot to two feet, in which there'd be a railing, and then, and then your living space, so.
Just, I'm sorry, just a second. Where are we on this? Can you show us where we are when you're speaking about this?
So, referring, you can do the rendering, yeah, that's fine.
All right, so we're going to mark, these are renderings I prepared for this application, am I correct?
That's correct.
And that shows the elimination of those balconies and the addition of the Juliette balcony.
Yeah, based upon some of the comments of the board, what we did was, like I said, to eliminate all the balconies, all the usable balconies, and convert those to Julietts. So they're, they're noted, basically revised on the plans. The other major.
So we're going to identify this as E6 for the board.
All right, good. Yeah. The other move that we made here, too, was where we have, where we have an amenity balcony off of the second floor. So this is, this is 900 building. So what we did was, we put a wood slat fence that would be six foot tall, so that any neighboring residence wouldn't be able to see, you know, anybody that's utilizing that deck. So, in the 900 building, you can see.
Before we go to that, I also see in the garage door.
The garage door, the other revision that we made was, instead of a grill garage door, was to go with a solid garage door, in which was requested by the board at the last meeting.
Go on.
Mm-hmm. And the building 901, the same thing, where the building creates an L shape. Again, we eliminated all the balconies off of the rear of the building, and again, created a six-foot wood slat fence, again, so that any use of the, a deck would not disturb the neighboring residences. And this is another exhibit that depicts what it'd be like on that deck, and you can see, and I guess this is going to be another.
That's, that's one set of plans, am I correct? These renderings?
Yes.
We'll do that as one set.
Okay.
Well, there are two different sets of renderings, one's for one set of buildings, one building for one.
And one's for the other.
Okay, then we can do them separately. That's fine. So A5 would have been which building?
900.
And then E6 will make.
901.
901.
And A7 will be 901. So, in looking at A7, you can see the design of the amenity deck, which would have landscaping and pavers, and we put in a person for scale, so that you can see that the height of the fence would be, you know, screened for the neighbors. And on this building as well, again, the comment by the board, we also added a solid garage door as well, eliminating the grill.
And those are, the rendering goes to the extent that we can see from the renderings, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, let's go back, then, to the plan that we have, A4. Okay, taking a look at A4, those changes are also reflected on these plans, am I correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Any other revisions to the plans that you've made as a result of all these comments?
Just on the ground floor, the parking area, we, we added some wheel stops where it butts up to a circulation. We've also added a little bit more detail on the bike racks and the number of bike racks. So on the 900 building, we have, let me just grab my notes. So altogether, we have a total of, let's see, 20, 28, 48, 48 and 14? What is that?
42.
Yeah, 62 in the 900 building, and in the 901 building, we have 96 bikes. So we've, you know.
In terms of circulation, do you see any conflict with getting to those bikes and circulating on the other side?
No, I don't.
No issue with that?
No.
Can you please go back to 901, which was the other one? That one. So, can you zoom in a little bit more to the ones that are darkening adjacent to the parking space? So how much, how much room do we have between the rack and the limit of the space? So there's a wheel stop, there's like a 20 of overhead.
Right.
So if I change my bike up, my one wheel is facing the car, and the other wheel is.
Yeah, the type of racks that these are, they would be tilted up, they're like a double.
These are tilt racks?
Yeah.
Do you think that's enough?
In our discussion last time, they put the wheel stop since, and I even go straight up to get out. I think you sort of have the problem with the car, the bike, squeezing bikes through, but at least they can go up and out, and I save the path, but no cars can go pocket. Their tilt racks give more space, that wasn't a matter of how, how they're going to.
Bike racks?
They're tilt racks, we put, okay. My other concern is the overhead, the wheel stop and the bike.
So with those, those two, I mean, we can look to try to push them a little bit, you're supposed to have a little bit, you know, this prescribed amount of room that you have to have. Yeah. Unless we, unless we just eliminate those.
With what?
Unless we eliminate those two.
Any of this building you indicate you have 62 bike racks?
Yes.
That was like, keep it.
Yeah. I just wish we could get it to fit better.
Yeah, it's hard to help with this picture, but.
Because we want them to be functional, we want people to use them. We don't want there to be a conflict, you know, with parked cars.
You have sufficient room to be able to maneuver those racks to ensure there's no conflict, am I correct?
Do they only come in these numbers?
Wait, let me, let me just finish that question. Do you have sufficient room to be able to?
I believe they are. These two, the two that were in question, those two, that is being pointed to, because they back up to the parking space, the owner of the bike could be able to get their bike out of the rack, and then, you know, go to the exit. I don't see that as being an issue, unless the board feels that the car that's parked there, to get to the aisle, is an issue, which I really don't think so.
I mean, that's a general concern, it's just, you know, you have to squeeze between the cars to get to that space at all, unless you're coming directly from the, you know, the path to the north.
In your opinion, you think there's no space there?
I do.
Okay. Eric, you had a question?
Just about the configuration, are these the only numbers? These are eights and sixes, do they make tens or twelves? Okay, just take this one there.
Well, we have a big column there, there's.
Oh, is that, is that an optician?
Yeah, that's a big concrete column, yeah. I mean, we did our best to squeeze in as many as we could within the prescribed, you know, distances that these racks need to, you know, maneuverability and room that they need to have.
Any other revisions to the plans?
There was a comment about utility meters, and those will comply, we do have.
We'll get to the reports, but just look at the plans right now. Any other revisions I can make?
No, no, that was it.
All right, what I'd like to do is have the board reports marked, I think we're up to B3 and 4, am I correct? All right, so why don't we mark the TNM report that stated April 26, 2023, revised, I don't know what revision date on this.
No, so, Mr. Karas, that's a misprint, it should be April 26, 2024.
All right, so we'll mark that as B3 for identification, and then we'll mark as B4, the CCH report that has been updated through April 22, 2024. First, what I'm going to do is take a look at the TNM report, I don't think there are many comments in here that contain, it's noted that the plans were revised when the balconies are in the rear of the building, that is correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I think that's the extent that really applied to the architectural testimony in the TNM report, looking at B4, which is a CCH report. Directly to page 8, D on that page talks about bicycle parking, and we just covered that, am I correct?
Yes.
Just to go through, I do want to mention, there is a comment within the report about the right of way, everything has been taken out of the right of way, so there will be no easement or license agreement necessary.
Can you just help us out as to what page we're on?
I'm just generally saying.
Okay.
I'll find it in here, but I just.
Just, just in general, like, when you're going through.
It's somewhere around page 13 or something.
That's all right, that's okay.
I guess what I'm curious most about, so, I think we had talked last time about potential green building opportunities, green building design opportunities.
We've added that, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to. But.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, and the garage ventilation. So you're putting solid doors on the garages now, so is that changing anything about how the garage area is being ventilated at all?
No, I mean, if it does, once we get to the.
There's line on openings on the back wall.
If we need to partially, you know, have a small amount of mechanical ventilation, and as, you know, as it goes with whatever amounts of openings, we'll, we'll make it work.
Okay, and, I'm sorry, can you, just to the, what are the elevation drawings, the backside?
The rendering or elevation?
The elevation.
Right there.
Just zoom in on the rear, not the side.
Yeah. Oh, that's the front, yeah.
That's back.
Yeah.
One second, let me reorient you a little bit. I just want to clarify some of the openings at the ground level in the garage. It looks like there's, there were like some kind of vents in addition to the screens, ventilation screens.
Yes.
Okay, all right, are those strictly for the garage?
Strictly for the garage.
Or is that other common space?
Uh, no, just, just the garage.
That's just for the garage? Okay, so, yeah, like, so that horizontal looking grill, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a ventilation grill?
Yes.
And then the other ones, what others?
The other ones are more of grills, yeah.
So are the, is that mechanically ventilated, that? For that grill, and the other ones are just passive?
So the louvers up top, you know, the more narrow one on top?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, that's for the mechanical ventilation, so, yeah. And then the ones that show the, we'll call the fence, yeah, the fencing, that's for passive.
That's for passive, okay. So the mechanical one, is that in or out?
I'm not following.
Is that for exhaust or inlet?
That is for, that would be for exhaust.
Okay, so fresh air is coming in through the screamy ones, and then exhaust is coming out of the louvered one?
Yeah, and that would only, that would only occur, it's not constantly mechanically vented. What happens is, there's CO2 detectors, that if it reached a certain level, then it'll kick on, yeah.
And that's common within these types of garage, this type of system, am I correct?
Yeah, yes. It's not like there's going to be fumes pouring out of this garage, it's.
All right, just want to make sure we all understand how it's working. Okay.
All right, continuing on to the report, page 11, 5.2, it talks about overhead utilities, the combination plans were revised to indicate the undergrounded overhead utilities on Madison and Bangs. We're not proposing doing that, if you take a look at the redevelopment plan undergrounding the utilities, it only required on Springfield Avenue, as reflected in page 41 to 67 of the redevelopment plan, it's not required on Madison or Bangs, and that is not included within this project. 5.3, mechanical equipment, there's a common plans have been revised to provide the location involved rooftop equipment and indicate screening for some elements. Common continues, other no details of the screen, the elevations appear to show rooftop equipment without screening. Can you comment on that screening for that rooftop?
Yes, the, the equipment that we show on our, on our roof, you have the roof plan? So, all the little, we'll call it condenser units, those are very small, those will not be seen, so we're not proposing to screen those. But there are a couple RTUs, rooftop units, that service the common areas, or the retail, or, and, as well as a generator, will be screened, and basically, it would be a solid metal-type screening that typically is mounted on a, on a curb or attached to the equipment itself. But those, the locations of those, regardless of screening or not screening, would not be seen because they're, you know, either in the center of the building, and the viewpoints from, you know, from any point of view would, would not show. But we're going to screen them anyway.
Continuing on to 5.4, utility service connections, common was screened, plenty of screened plantings are provided around both transformers, and additional screening has been provided for the transformer 900 Madison, if you confirm that.
Yes.
Regarding to utility meters, comment 5.5 on page 11, indicates current plan does not show the location of meters on the screen wall for 901 Madison, initially revised plans for 900 Madison, state the screen walls to be six feet in height, however, it's shown only at four feet. Meters at picket and cell elevation appear to be mounted higher than six feet. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, that was a mistake on our part. It would be, those screen walls would be six feet or higher.
And they would fully screen those meters, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
All right. Covered back of generators, garage ventilation, we just covered.
Before we leave utilities, the undergrounding of utilities, was that a condition of the approval of the original plans?
I don't believe it was.
It wasn't?
No, I'm going to keep trying.
Well, it says in, in 5.2, it says a condition of the prior approval was to underground as much of the overhead utilities as possible. So I'm just, if it was a condition prior, then.
Then possible.
Then possible, okay.
Okay, continuing on, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, so for 901 Madison, so they're going, the meters are going to be on the roof wall? So that's the space?
Behind there, yes.
And that's six feet, and there should be sufficient coverage for all of them?
That's correct.
Okay.
In terms of architectural comments in the CCH report, I think we've covered just about all of them.
Is there any separate witness for the affordable?
Well, the affordable, I mean, it's by statute, so if you want, we can run through that real quick. On the affordable, it's compliant in terms of the number, I believe the number of units that are being provided is 25 units. If you can go to comment or number 11 on page 15, 11.1 indicates that the project is compliant with the affordable obligation. In terms of the breakdown, the affordable classification of the units, you can do that certainly as a condition, we understand what the requirements are.
What numbers?
That's on 11.2 and 11.3 on page 15 of the CCH report. In terms of veteran distribution, I believe the number of 1s, 2s, and 3s are compliant, the report does indicate at 11.4, that it takes the two buildings separately, the 17 are required, 901 are eight required in Building 900.
Yeah, I think you need to have one more in the other building. Yeah, I think you have, you need to have one more in the other building, pick one out of the 901 and add it to...
As a unified project, I don't believe that's required. Correct me if I'm wrong. If required, we'll do it, if not, we're not going to do it.
We'll make it the industry agent's decision.
That's fine, perfect, okay.
And is that, that, should we put that as a condition?
Yeah, we put that as a condition.
Yeah, the board doesn't have to...
Exactly.
Right.
Be the decider of that, you know, with that.
Yeah.
I think in terms of the other requirements, I mean, there are statutory requirements, we'll find that.
They were just, they're affordable, they're all family units, not interest-... rentals.
Exactly, exactly. And I think that includes a testimony that I have for the other...
Does the board have any other questions for this witness?
I just had one that didn't come up last time. The elevation for 900, there is a spot for public art, is that a requirement or an option?
There's a requirement to provide public art, it's not required to be there.
That's my question.
Or just on the building.
That's, that's my question, is, is it going to be there, or might it be there?
That's where they're proposing to put it.
Okay, so if we approve this, there will be something there?
Well, we would have to go before art.
Right, 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 right.
But that's the space they're, that's the spot providing for art, yes, okay.
Any other questions from our planning board members? Any questions from our professionals for this witness? Nothing? You okay, Don?
Yes.
Okay, all right, any, can I open it to any questions from the public for this witness? Anyone? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we will have our engineer provide testimony.
Mr. Engineer, is that you ready? So I swear, I'm affirming testimony, not give this man the truth, no truth, no truth. Please state your name again for the record, you were here last time.
I was here last time, right, it's Mark, well, first of all, I do call that, and my name is Mark.
Last time, you do this time.
And my credentials all remain in place, and it's Mark Zelina.
Z?
Z E L I N A, Z as in zebra.
Thank you.
All right, what I'm going to have you do is take a look at what's up on the board, and we're going to identify that as A, A for identification. If you can tell us what it is that we're looking at, and also give the last revision date on that document.
Okay, the, it's a rendering of the site plan, preliminary final major site plan for the project, see the revision date on there, it's April 1st, 2024.
Okay, taking a look at what's marked as A, can you go through what revisions have been made since the last time we appeared before this board?
There are very little, if any revisions that are, that can be seen, we've updated some of the details of the drawings to match the architectural plans themselves, the number of parking spaces, the circulation, and the like have not been changed on the plan. So in essence, there are no visible changes to the rendering that's presented to you at this moment.
Now, in terms of the environmental efficiency of this project, are any efforts being made to make this either LEED certified or consistently LEED operation of the performance route?
Mr. Architect has to answer.
Who's going to? So the engineer on that one, who wants to have that? All right, I'll call him up momentarily, just to go over some of the requirements.
Absolutely.
In terms of lighting, have any changes been made to the lighting, or anything been added to the plan? Any further details?
There has, there is not.
Okay, so that all remains the same, am I correct?
That is correct.
Revisions to that?
No revisions.
Okay, well, we're going to want some revisions.
Oh, no. Well, in terms of...
There's some inconsistencies between what's in the architectural plans for lighting, what you've got on the site, get together, there's building noted lighting that probably needs to get modeled, and I think there's 3,000 K colored temperature spec, we only allow 2,700.
I think we, as conditioned last time, said we'd do 2,700.
Did we?
I thought we had said...
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to need that changed in the plan?
We will comply.
All right, so, hold on, so we're talking about 2,700, that we've agreed that that's going to happen, what else do you, you wanted somebody to get together?
There's building noted lighting that's not shown on this plan, okay, that it refers to the architecture, but it's on the outside of the building.
Right, so we should see it.
So we need to see how it affects the lighting.
Right, so we don't have a lighting plan?
We don't have an apprehensive one.
We don't have an apprehensive one.
Don, are you speaking about the point by point analysis to show the impact of all the building fixtures, as well as the site fixtures? We'll provide that and make sure it's...
You'll make that compliant and conform with any requirements of the...
All right, so how does that work, if we don't have one, and you're looking, and you're saying you're putting it as a, as compliance?
We can do it as conditional.
So then who will take a look at that, that would be you?
Your professionals, Jim.
All right.
No issue with that, none at all. What I want to do then, is I want to go through the reports that we have, first I'm going to take a look at the 3, which is the engineering report in T and M, and it's dated April 26, 2024. And I believe everything on there has been addressed. The EV spaces, as we note on paragraph of page 4, we provide a previous testimony that we are compliant with EV requirements for the project. Number 6, comment is any damages to the curb and pavement sidewalk in the city right of way as a result of the enterprise will be responsible to the property there, asking for, no objection, am I correct?
You are correct.
Can, I'm sorry, can you please repeat 5 and 6, because I didn't hear what you were saying?
5 is EV, we testified at the prior hearing with regard to EV, that we are complying with the requirements on EV, we take the appropriate EV credits for the project.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, just real quick, we were just asking for those calculations shown on the cover sheet, which you indicated you would comply with that the last hearing for both items, 5 and 6.
Okay.
Just additional notes that need to be put on the plans, clarification.
All right, can we, can you just remind me, if we're, are we talking about EV ready, or are we, are we, are we ready to plug in day one? We're plugging, we're plugging in day one, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Which will decrease the amount, I guess, that will require for the venting. Going now to the other report, I think that's pretty much covered everything.
Where did we leave off with the county representatives? Last time, were we still waiting, we wanted to find out where the fire department entrance is going to be?
We met, we had a meeting with, with the county representatives, as well as the design engineers for Asbury, we had a Zoom meeting call with everyone, and all the, the design, or, I would say, the modifications to Memorial Drive have all been coordinated. There is no entrance directly out onto Memorial Drive that'd affect us, the county is 100% aware of both projects and has approved both, there are improvements being made to Memorial Drive by the city itself, and we've been provided with those plans to make sure that our plans are coordinated with them, so we're all on the same page there, as we discussed at the meeting with the county on March 28th.
All right, and there was a comment, I recall, trying to find it within here, about the sidewalk, size of the sidewalk.
Right now, it's currently 10 feet in front of the project, and at one time, it appeared to have been 11 feet, but that was not true, there was a, some conflicting enumeration on our plans, so it had always been intended to be 10 feet across the front of the sidewalk, or from front of the buildings, and basically, that's as wide as we can make it to provide the strip of landscaping at the foundation of the building, as well as the strip of landscaping out along Memorial Drive, to make sure we try to preclude any pedestrian track crossing Memorial Drive along the fronts of the buildings.
And that has been approved by the county, correct?
It is, everything in the right of way of the county has to be, and approved by them.
All right, what I'm making reference to is on the CCH report, page 10, there's a comment relative to Memorial Drive, we have to wit the sidewalk, we just confirm that it is 10 feet, and it is per requirements of the county. There's also a comment 4.2, street tree layout, that I'd like to address, comment indicating...
Before we get to the street tree layout, can you talk about, so the county is not allowing the planter seat wall combination of meters, we hoped for and expected a design of along the frontage for that planted area.
In their right of way, absolutely not, no.
It's just at grade?
Yes.
So that's by county?
The county said? So you're saying the county won't let us have a planter wall?
That is correct. There's no plowing issues, there's, there's a lot, not that it was firsthand in those meetings, but I understand it, that was discussed, certainly it wouldn't be a problem with us to put that, that information, or that, those improvements on, in, but certainly, we have to deal with them and everything within their right of way, and their right of way goes almost right up to the front of the building, so we were very much, you know, restricted as to what improvements we can make. Certainly, it's not us that do not want to do it, or the team, we're happy to do, you know, we're working with the board and providing whatever thing, whatever we can, you know.
But that's county requirement.
That is, yep.
You're talking about between the curb and the sidewalk, that strip? But it's not grass, right? It's not, it's not grass on that?
Oh, no, absolutely not, shrubs, grasses, and the like, and all of it has to be approved by the county, because, you know, they're concerned about the, you know, the snow and salt and the, and the like, so we've coordinated that palette with them, and we'll certainly work with your planner's office and the county again, because again, we have no issues whatsoever, we're trying to make, make sure everyone is happy.
Similarly, in terms of the street tree layout on Memorial Drive, we look at comment 4.2, there's a comment in the planners' report about complementing the vertical rhythm of the architectural arms in the building entrances, given the total length of the planters and street frontage, at least one more tree should be added to each planter, and it says this condition for approval has not been incorporated into the amended plan. In terms of the trees and the lights on Memorial Drive, any conversations with the county with regard to that?
Well, what's maybe not obvious, you, you see the nice big round green circles that represent the trees, in between each of those trees are the street, are streetlights, so there's a rhythm along the sidewalk and the street to provide adequate lighting and the street trees that are required, so to, to alter that, to coordinate that with the building, it becomes difficult at best, and even the addition of one additional tree would, would be difficult as well, because there, because of the spacing of the lighting and the trees themselves, and the, the plazas that we have at, at the corners, another tree just isn't easy to fit there. Again, we'll, we'll work something out if we have to, but right now, we're very, we'd like the, the plan as it's presented.
So as presented, this plan, what you have on there works best in terms of how this building and how the site is being designed, am I correct?
Yes.
But you haven't modeled the streetlight lighting, so how do you know what the best spacing is for the lights?
We'll provide that, we'll make sure that it works. The issue is, they're alternated with, in between a tree and a streetlight, a tree and a streetlight, as we go down along, along the street itself, and what's concerning is the illumination along the sidewalk, so we'll provide that, the, what was it, the spotlighting, point by point analysis that you had required, and we'll make sure, we'll, if we have to make some adjustments to, to...
Right, if it's possible to make an adjustment to add the trees?
Yeah, we will.
We should.
Absolutely.
If we, if it, once we get this analysis.
No egos here, we'll work with anyone here.
I don't believe there are any more comments for this witness with regards to this application.
Does the board have any other questions for this witness?
Yeah, I just like a clarification concerning the county approval, just go through that once more, what they, what they approved along Memorial, how would they, did they approve something, or did they just reject what was presented to them?
I, I can't tell you what was rejected or not, I, all the thing I could tell you is the current plan before you this evening has conditional approval from the county. As far as all the details, the layout, the landscaping, what they, they've approved, we have some other paperwork items that we have to supply to them before they consider a final approval.
So it doesn't sound as though they rejected anything, which is, I'm confused.
Well, no, 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 I, I don't have the hiss...
I think Mrs. Zelina is familiar with the negotiations that happened as part of the original approval.
Okay.
I don't.
Because that was not your...
That is correct, yeah, I'm, I came in a little bit later, I'm going based on what the, the other members of my firm had relayed to me about that, that the seated walls that we were talking about were, were prohibited by the county, and now, whether it's rejected or, you know, there were meetings held with the county, there were discussions with the county, and what we've come to, that meets our approval, was the plan before you this evening. Again, like I said, the walls were a part of the original plan and discussions with the county, I, I can't sit here and say I had firsthand knowledge of it, I, preparing for this meeting.
But the county didn't issue an approval for that old original plan?
Oh, absolutely not.
Yeah, the conditional approval that was given by the county had removed that wall, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else on the planning board, I mean, on the board, any other questions for this witness? No, any, any questions from our professionals?
One question, just, Mrs. Zelina, I'll just make sure that whatever approvals or the latest letters that you received from the outside agency gets submitted to the secretaries of the...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and anyone from the public would like to have any questions of this witness? Okay?
Just want to bring back...
Just a second, we have public...
Yes, Yvonne Clayton, 908 Cookman Avenue, just one question, when you were talking with the county, was there any discussion about adding crosswalks, like at Madison Avenue, or?
The city engineers are working with the county as it relates to the design of Memorial Drive, the revised signalization, crosswalks, and the like, so it wasn't our purview to do that, but Memorial Drive is being retrofitted as part of the project, it's being repaved, and there are, I can't say with certainty, but I do believe there are slight crosswalks, but that is not part of what we provided with, okay?
Not Madison, China won't let you have crosswalks in Madison, and then we'll do all four crosswalks in Bangs?
No, but I believe it's an L shape, there's a two-way, you know, you cross one street, cross in.
She'd ask me about Madison, yeah, do you have...
Madison, yeah.
I apologize, no, because it's not signalized.
Crossing Memorial Drive, because if you're going to have that many people living there, they're not going to be walking to either Cookman or Bangs to cross, so, anyway, just wanted to know, thank you.
Yeah, but is that, is that something that, based on with this question, so is that something having to do with this project, James, or is that the Memorial Drive project to have, to have the crosswalk? To have, to have the crosswalks to go to Madison from, well, at this point, the firehouse? So across Memorial? That's your question, right? Having to do with Memorial?
Yes.
So I'm not sure if this is a memorial reconfiguration, or is it part of this project?
It could be either, because as part of the project, you could do an improvement, but again, it's up to the county about what improvements are made. And they're not going to make those improvements at all. It could be part of the project.
I mean, I certainly understand what you're, what you're saying about getting a crosswalk there. It makes perfect sense.
Yeah, the county engineer has a different view than we do about where pedestrians should be crossing.
They typically won't put crosswalks mid-block or add a intersection at a signal like that. And they typically like to do in a L shape, like three sides in the intersection, instead of all four.
Oh, are they going to put up the no pedestrian signs too, do you think? I got those on my corner.
Yeah, that's going to, that's going to be, that's going to be rough there. Because that's where the firehouse is, right?
Yes.
At this point?
Yeah, and there's a strong, you know, there's a strong linkage there.
And, and the train.
And they're going to want to cross Memorial. They're not going to want it to hurt. But unfortunately, we don't control Memorial. The county has been unyielding to our requests.
Okay, so, but we've tried.
Take it back.
We've tried.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I don't, I don't know if that's something that the city can do. I don't know. To, to push for that.
I see it as an issue.
I mean, it's something that, on my disposal, it's going to be a problem.
The entrance to the building is on the corner
Yeah.
of Madison, and people are going to be going to the train station.
You're right.
They are not going to walk to Bangs or Cookman to cross the street. They're going to cross the street regardless if there's a crosswalk there or not. And to make it safer, my belief is there should be a crosswalk.
They're only not doing it now because there's a fence.
Listen, I don't, I'm sure my client would love to see a crosswalk there in terms of the safety for the people that are going to be inhabiting these buildings and living in these buildings, but it's up to the county.
And there is no signal there, so I'm not saying it's better, it's good or bad. I'm just, without a signal there, that's the county's justification.
But there's no signal at Cookman either.
Well, but the thing is, is that wherever, not, I don't recall, but from where the firehouse is, there's going to be a signal from the firehouse. I don't know if that is at Madison, or where will that segment, where will it be at Cookman?
Yeah. It's at Cookman.
All right, so that signal will be at Cookman, not at Madison?
Right.
Okay.
I'm going to be pushing for improvements to Bangs Avenue, Bangs Avenue and Cookman, but I don't think we're going to get a crosswalk at Madison. Hoping to get one at Bangs, but I'm not optimistic after working with the county for the reasons I have.
Okay. So you've been, you've been in touch with them? You've had active conversations?
Not about this project.
No, no, not about this project, but I'm just saying, on Memorial.
Practically speaking, this is a question for James. Practically speaking, if the county does not approve a crosswalk along that stretch, other than at the intersections, we can't ask this applicant to install it, am I correct?
Right.
No, but then, yeah, we can ask, first the county, and ask the county, but just once the county says no or yes, it's a county decision.
It's a county decision. Whatever, whatever we say here is overruled by what the county...
Not our street, yeah.
Yes, sir, right, that's exactly right.
That's, that's going to be a problem. That's going to be a problem.
Any other comments from the public? Okay. Next.
Just going to call up our architect just to address the environmental issue. You guys, sorry, I just brought up. And in terms of green building design...
Okay.
In terms of green building design, this building is not going to be LEED certified, am I correct?
Not certified, but we're, we're going to design it based upon a LEED Silver green building design. So we're going to go through all the checklists, meaning that whatever would be required to get a LEED certified Silver is what we'll be doing.
So the checklist hasn't been developed yet, or has been?
Well, not, not, not for, for, yeah, not yet, but if you go through, you know, the LEED requirements, they have their prerequisites and their, you know, you know, all their...
I'm a LEED accredited professional.
Oh, okay.
So, so, so I understand that you're going to take a look at all of the possible credits that LEED Silver might require?
Correct.
And you're going to implement enough of them to achieve Silver? That's what you're committed to?
Yes.
So how is that coordination going to be done amongst your design team? Because there are site design, building design, and other design criteria that all need to be, you're all going to have to talk.
For Aspire, yeah.
And you're going to have, how are you going to document that you are achieving that? Like, what R value of your insulation, et cetera, et cetera? And glass types and so on, so forth? How is that all going to be documented?
My client, Denholtz, has hired a consultant to champion that.
And who is going to sign off that those have been met or achieved?
That would be the consultant.
So as part of resolution compliance, you would submit the elements from the checklist that you are planning on achieving with the design? And then we would be, when you come in for building permits, that checklist would be used by zoning to, to ensure that that's what's moving forward?
Correct. It's not LEED certification, but we're going to comply with the Silver requirement.
But on that checklist, there are multiple categories that require post-construction commissioning and certification and tracking, so like, energy efficiency, which is like an example. And so you have to, at some point, prove that you've achieved. You don't have to apply for LEED, but where is the teeth that says, yes, we implemented this, and yes, we achieved?
Is that, is that when you're, when you become certified?
No, it's different.
That's just compliance?
Well, if you were doing the certification process, at some point, post-construction, they would go in and measure how much energy the building is using.
So we, my client has made application to the Aspire program, and as part of that, this is a requirement.
So I guess the question still remains, like, how are you going to nail down what you've achieved and what you haven't, if all you have to do is, like, if some of them require post-construction certification or commissioning?
As part of the Aspire program, which my client has applied to, it state that's a requirement. So whatever we...
So you're going to report to the state?
Exactly.
To ensure your monitoring is achieving the energy efficiency, for example? So we need that sent to the city?
That's fine.
As, as backup to the...
Yeah, yeah, that's all I'm trying to get is...
What we submit to the state, we'll provide to the city.
How, essentially, how's it being documented? And who is responsible for, at the end of the process, saying, oh, you were supposed to provide X number of bike racks, X, you know, the R value of your insulation is this, the albedo of the materials on your roof? I'm just listing all of those things.
Yeah, the same, as it's done for the state, we'll provide the same documentation to the city.
Right, but it, but that's part of, is that part of getting the CO? You know, to have that in hand, to say, yes, this is the...
No, because, no, because the building's built, it's occupied, and these requirements thereafter are, I guess, they come into play, documentation's provided at that point in time. So you're already at the CO, but we'll provide the documentation that we have to, to the state, which is a requirement in order to comply with the Aspire program.
All right, so you have to provide it to the state anyway, so you will also provide it to the city?
That is exactly right.
I know, it's kind of new territory. We don't usually think of it after a building's built.
Yeah, well, I mean, LEED, usually, like, if you would, if you apply to a LEED for, to get LEED certification, six months, or 12 months, or 18 months after the building is built, they say, oh, this is how much energy you're using, and this is how it compares to a building of...
We tie it to the performance bond release.
Oh, we could do that?
Yeah, I don't know if you can do that.
Huh? We could suggest that?
Just as a timing thing.
Yeah, but I don't know if you can do that. There's statutory requirements in terms of performance bonds, and I don't think you can hold up to release that for something like this.
I, I wouldn't say that it's a prerequisite for release of a bond. I'm just saying, like, internally for the zoning office to know that the reporting's done.
As long as we're not violating the state laws.
Yeah, I agree with you. It can't be a condition or prerequisite to bond release.
But it can be a trigger.
Yeah, it's a trigger.
Yeah.
It's a flag, it's a milestone.
Yeah, it's part of the bond checklist, be like, oh, did we get this? You know, it's not going to stop you from getting your money, but it's part of...
That would be something that's taken...
There'd actually be maintenance, not performance, it's going to be longer term.
Internally within the city, not for resolution.
Yes, so right, what can our condition be? Can it be that our professionals have to receive checklist that, what you said you're going to send and be approved by professionals?
It's going to be internal to the city.
Or part of resolution compliance?
It would be in the construction department.
Some of these things are going to be post-construction.
Yeah, it's post-construction.
No, I meant what can, what can we actually make as a condition?
I have the language that just discussed, that it's going to be provided to the city in order to show compliance with their intent to go into the Aspire program. So that, I have that as a condition.
Okay. Yeah, and I would just encourage, you know, your entire design team to think together about this. Don't look for credits, you, like, try and get everybody's head on the same page about how you're going to achieve it, because if you only meet the minimum, and then it turns out that you can, or it doesn't, you know, then you can have, you could have several misses and still achieve what you're trying to do. So I would, I would say try not to do the bare minimum. Try and get everybody to do the most they can, so that whatever shakes out in the process doesn't work out, isn't feasible, isn't efficient, isn't cost-effective, doesn't actually meet its targets, doesn't bring you below that threshold.
So you overachieve, and then things will shake out?
Yes. I would aim higher than you need, so that you have room to wiggle at the end.
Anything else? Okay, any other questions from the board members? Any other questions for this witness from our professionals? No? Any questions?
Sorry, just as a side note, there are some very easily available credits for this project because it's close to a train station. Yeah, so, achieving Silver should not be terribly difficult.
Any questions from the public to this witness? No? Okay, oh, we have a question? Okay.
Jen Souter, 1403 Third Ave. Along the lines of the Aspire program, just was, just wanted to ask, because there's two pieces that I was curious about. Can you send the LEED checklist when it goes to the state? So that's not post. So there's the LEED checklist that goes to the state Aspire program very soon, and then the documentation, basically everything that goes, can the project send all the Aspire documentation to the city when it goes? So not, not, some's before, some's after?
Well, as it relates to LEED?
Correct.
Yeah, that would...
Yeah, basically anything that the city, I'm just asking if that's possible.
Yeah, as it relates to LEED, that's...
I think that that's probably what we have in there, Jack, right? That, that the information goes to the city, just like it would go to the state?
Thank you.
So we get that?
Thank you.
Okay? All right, any other witnesses? Mr. Carr?
I do. My name is Gates, G-A-T-E-S, Kielty, K-I-E-L-T-Y.
Did you testify previously on this application, am I correct?
Uh, no.
Oh, I thought you did.
No.
Let me have you put your qualifications on the record.
Yeah, yeah. I graduated from Pennsylvania State University in 2014 and have been working at Millilowbauer Carman since that time. Millilowbauer Carman is a landscape architectural firm based in Brielle, New Jersey. I am a licensed landscape architect as of December 2021. This is my first time testifying.
So your, your certified, your certifications are up to date?
Yes, they are.
Okay. All right.
What I'm going to have you do is first identify what we have up on the board. Are those plans that you prepare to help prepare for this application?
Yes, they are.
We're going to mark that as A9 for identification, if we can have a last revision date.
April 1st, 2024.
What I want you to do is go through that plan and describe exactly what is being proposed for the site.
Sure. So this is the Building 900 amenity roof deck.
Could you speak into my place?
Sure. This is the Building 900 amenity roof deck area. We've had, we had a previous approval for this roof deck that was approved a number of years ago. And since that time, the amenity roof deck has been expanded, and the planting has been upgraded from what was previously approved, a cedum tray planting, extensive planting scheme, to an intensive planting scheme. Additionally, the communal areas have been expanded upon to now include outdoor communal dining, as well as some outdoor lounge spaces. Previously approved also were dog runs for both amenity decks, and that is still included on this amenity roof deck.
You'd initially mentioned if we changed from some sort of planting to another kind of planting, not knowing what that means?
Yeah.
Can you tell us what that means?
Yes. Extensive planting is essentially cedum planting, so they're very short, low soil profile, doesn't require a whole lot... Yes.
Okay.
Whereas now, there's extensive planting, which is a lot more lush, robust planting. Pollinator plantings are included, as well as those that provide habitat.
Okay.
This next plan is Building 900 amenity roof deck from the previous approval. This amenity area was expanded to the western portion of the building. Initially, it was just the amenity deck along Memorial Drive. But now, additionally, similarly to the initial, the, similarly to Building 900, there are communal dining areas, lounge spaces, and again, a dog run.
Can, can you show us what was added? Because it's hard to tell on this. What, what was added?
Sure. So the dog run space was not added, but it was shifted and expanded upon.
Okay.
There is now a feature wall that includes an outdoor bar, not serving liquor, but just for the purposes of entertainment, and a fireplace. There is also a grill area with two grills and an outdoor sink and some additional seating.
So that's the only thing that was expanded upon?
Well, it's on the backside of the building, as well as the front.
Yeah, and then the, correct, the western portion of this area here was not included at all in the previous approval. This includes some passive recreation and lounge areas, as well as the residential patios.
And the western side has a privacy screen completely enclosing it, right?
Yes, that's correct.
How about the part facing Memorial? Is there any...
There is no screen wall along the face of Memorial. There is no screen wall along the face of Memorial Drive, no.
And then how does that work with the dog run? Like, do the dogs ju- jump?
Yeah, there's a parapet with a fence along that edge, so they will not.
Will you be able to see that fence from the street?
You could see the dogs playing even better. Sorry.
That's my question, what kind of fence is it? How high is it?
What are we talking about here?
I'm all for a dog run, just get nervous when I see like.
It's like sheep going over.
Can you imagine? They'll be going over Memorial. Okay. Can you just explain how that's working?
Yeah.
So, okay, go ahead.
So.
Tell us how that works.
There is a dog run enclosure that is four feet tall that acts as the perimeter for the dog run, but then the architectural parapet with railing on top of that, I think Lance can speak to that at some point, but that will be, the perimeter will be enclosed by both this four-foot enclosure and the architectural parapet.
So four feet is enough to hold these dogs in?
That is what we typically use, yes.
I hope they're not big dogs.
I can see the dogs in the upper right, they're not.
Yeah.
And then what does, I mean, what does that enclosure look like? Is this chain link? Is it?
It's, we have an extend mesh.
So it's like a fine gauge.
Yeah, cable railing.
It's so that they can't climb it, it's a small enough gauge so they can't get their little feet in and climb.
And now, so now my other hat is on. From Memorial, what are we seeing?
You're mostly seeing the parapet wall.
All right. To be serious about this, you dog owners, can your dogs jump four feet? I'm saying.
Now, I have, I have a large boxer. She is not jumping four feet.
All right, you got a boxer. All right, we're talking about.
Well, I have two dalmatians, they can definitely jump four feet. The point is, they don't want to because they're in the playground with their people.
With their people, so they're not interested in jumping.
Not over the fence.
Not in Memorial Drive. We didn't worry because they jumped over the fence and cares.
Yeah, we typically include signage for these areas that encourage residents not to just leave their dogs in these spaces.
So we're all okay with this four foot? We're all okay with this?
And that can be, if for some reason you see issues, you can adjust that fence, am I correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
But based upon your experience with dog runs and all, you don't see any issues with the four feet?
Four feet has been sufficient, yes.
Okay. We did it in the coaster. Okay. All right.
I mean, we're not saying there will be a proliferation of balls thrown over the fence, but there's not likely to be dogs.
Correct.
I actually think that should be a rule, there should just be no toys in the dog run, they're going to haul it up over the fence. Personally, I don't think there should be toys in any dog run. But that's.
Can the fence legally be six feet? Without barriers or anything, without a bus in their back?
I don't think it would be a problem, it'd be like a screen, yeah, it'd be a screen wall, it wouldn't necessarily be a fence.
I mean, we're half joking about it, but I'd be sitting up here when a dog.
I know, yeah.
It's a memorial drop.
Everything right now is at four feet. It wouldn't match in terms of the design. I would venture to guess four feet is sufficient, but if for some reason it proves not to be.
That's, that's after headlines.
I mean, I totally appreciate the mayor's, sir, we don't want to have.
Listen, I've been at dog runs, at plenty of them at four feet. I've never seen an issue, certainly not with my dog, but with any other dogs.
The dog runs aren't elevated, that I know.
What's that?
The dog runs locally are not elevated above traffic. So we go to Wolf's Park, it was, the dog jumped over the fence into a baseball field, not into Memorial Drive.
Our office has done a number of amenity roof decks with dog runs and have used the four-foot height fence. I can't say we've had any incidents so far.
Let me, is it possible to have like the top leaning in where you're not going to do it or something? Ever see that?
I personally haven't seen that, but.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. There's, so there's a treatment that you can use on fences where there's like a foot and a half to two-foot topper that is angled into the space so you can't.
Right, you can't go over. It's not so easy to go over. I don't know, I feel more comfortable with having something.
Yeah.
A moat? A moat, yes, something.
How about a two-foot zed on top of the, on top of the four-foot wall?
Well, that's something, if on top of it you have part of the fence that moves in, that sort of thing.
Right. Right. Okay. I mean, I'd certainly feel more comfortable with something like that.
Like a flexible net like with a.
Baseboards.
We were behind the backstop, they kind of do the wings and.
Yeah, we'll figure something out.
Oh, I think we should put it as a recommendation and.
Two-foot chopper?
Some, something to.
That leans inward.
Something that leans inward, something that will take care of this concern because we're, we're on a main street here.
If we're not lucky.
No, we're not, we're not really lucky with stuff like this.
Cars and the dogs. Well, both.
Right, right, bad for the cars and the dogs.
So CCH takes no objection to any of the plantings or other aspects of the amenity design?
Okay.
And I know you guys have all these, you know, the rendering, you've seen all the 3D renderings. Is there a rendering that we can see from the outside, what this looks like with that four-foot fence and the parapet? Because I'm having a hard time.
Do we have some architectural? Do we have architectures that are not detailed up the landscape?
I don't know, it may just be over there.
Oh.
So the, okay, the wall, the dog run wall is not on it, but.
Yeah, but you could see it there, right there.
Where it would be.
Right, that's where it would be.
Right.
Yeah, just in the, in the dog area and to have something that, it shouldn't be too visible from the, from the street, it shouldn't really be an issue. But that's what we're asking for something. Because this is the first time we're having any kind of, any kind of a situation like this. Okay?
Yeah, I think the last thing we wanted to get on the coast is about dogs flying out there.
So we would want it in the two places, one on the, on 900 and 901.
Did on both?
On both. Sure, okay.
All right, in addition to the amenity space, any other plantings on the site?
Yeah, our scope was strictly.
It's limited to that?
Yeah, limited to the amenity decks.
So the test for.
That's real good?
Sure.
Okay, any other questions from the board? No questions? Questions from our professionals? We're okay? Questions from the public? Okay.
That's our entire presentation.
Okay.
Last time we said they were going to talk to us about staging.
I'm going to call my client, Steve Lidster, to briefly go through the staging for the project and how the project is going to be built overall. Yeah, just, Andy, on any of your projects, we've developed a standard clause and condition for staging to be with James to coordinate all that, protect the street closures and all that. Briefly, the buildings are going to be built and I'll have my client testify. The most part simultaneously, one will be done probably in six months or three days. So it's not a huge distinction in terms of how these slants are going to be developed. Yeah, I do have a plan somewhere, but I can't. So we just had to testify. Some sort of type of firm, testing one, that's getting the matter of truth and all truth and nothing but the truth. Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Steven Lidster, L-I-D, S-T-E-R.
S-D-E-P-H-E-N or V?
Uh, it was V.
Okay. All right, Steve, what is your position with Denholtz?
I'm the director of development for Denholtz.
You're familiar with this project, am I correct?
Yes.
In terms of the staging of construction of this project, why don't you briefly describe to the board how a project is going to be developed and the timeframe in terms of each building being developed?
Sure, so we plan to start on the larger of the two buildings first.
Which is the big one, 901. 901.
Thank you.
So we'll start, start on 901.
That's going to be about four to six months, we think. In that time, we're going to use the 900 lot for staging, for construction materials. Once we get the first floor done of the larger building at 901, we'll then be able to move that material into the garage of that building and start construction on the second building. So it'll be, depending on weather, time of year, it'll be a four to six month delay from the start of the first building to the start of the second building. And then it's about 18 months start to finish on each of the buildings.
What kind of space, street or sidewalk, do you think we'll occupy?
I think we'll be able to do, during the first phase, when we're only working on the one larger building, we'll be able to stay entirely on our other piece of property.
But the sidewalk's on like Bangs Avenue or?
I mean, there will be periods of time when we're doing finishes out there, it'll be temporary closures or we'll have to put some sort of sidewalk.
Do I have to do that for weeks or a month like that?
No, we don't anticipate it. We have a pretty big amenity decks, transfer slabs, so they have a lot of space up on that second floor. It'll be, like I said, temporary closures of the sidewalks there around the perimeters, the windows are going in or the exterior materials are going on the building.
And you'll coordinate with the city when you do those closures, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
And you have no problem meeting with James, meeting with the city to organize in anticipation of beginning construction.
Nope, not at all.
If we like to take the plan.
Yeah, I do have one, I just can't. But yeah, then it shows that essentially, starting over there and then flipping over to the other side.
You know, your truck and trailers are going?
That's also on our plan, we'll send it over to you.
My condition is rather inclusive, no as well as back, James slapped, have to get what he wants.
Sure. Yep.
Any other questions from the board members? Okay, any other questions from our professionals to this witness? Any questions from the public for this witness? No. Okay, thank you. Is that everything?
That concludes our application.
Okay. Any, I'd like to open up the, this to the public before the board comments. You going to get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Anyone from the public that would like to make a comment about this project?
Yvonne Clayton, 908 Cookman Avenue.
Please raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand.
Solve to swear.
The other right.
The other right.
Yes, I.
The other right.
I know, you're from Asbury.
I do.
Do you solve to swear affirm, your testimony about to give this matter, you true to the law, truth to nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, you can draw your hand and please state your name for the record and your address.
Yvonne Clayton, 908 Cookman Avenue.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. I do have a concern and it has to do with construction. Once you start construction, and we're also having the construction at the firehouse directly across the street, I'm worried about how people who are pedestrians are going to be able to maneuver and if the sidewalks are being closed because of the construction. I don't expect that you can answer that, but it's just a concern that I have. We have a number of pedestrians that use this corridor for getting back and forth between Bangs and Springwood. One, a second one would be lighting and how the lighting is going to impact the neighborhood and how it's going to impact the smaller houses that are surrounding you. And of course, we talked about, and I'm still concerned about, the people who are going to be crossing Memorial Drive from Madison Avenue because, trust me, they are going to cross at Madison Avenue, especially when the entrance to the building is right at Madison and then if they're going to the train station, shortest distance between two points, they're crossing. Other than that, I will say, it's not my favorite project because it's going to block my view, but as a project, I do appreciate it. I'm grateful for the affordable housing and that you have listened to our concerns and addressed them and that I hope you're going to be very good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? No? Okay.
Solve to swear affirm, testimony about to give this matter, you true to the law, truth to nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and your address.
Jennifer Souter, 1403 Third Avenue. I just had three quick comments. One is that in terms of, again, the sidewalk access, that I heard the comment that we don't anticipate any longer term closures, but I know that that, again, is a very well-used block and so if it were to become longer term on any of those blocks, not just Memorial, I think it becomes a real issue for the public, especially on that very busy area. And to the, I would just hope that the whole project team would work together on the lead checklist and the SPIRE requirements, not post, but early on, and that the city would ask for that documentation. And the third, oh dear, what did I say? It was echoing something that Yvonne said. Oh, yeah, same thing, safety, the safety, you know, everyone that lives in Asbury knows that that area is so dangerous in terms of crossing Memorial, so whatever the project team can do, the city can do in terms of working with the county to emphasize those crossings. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close public comment?
So moved. Second.
I know that I know, as a comment from, from the board, I agree that we have to be concerned about the staging more than a lot of other projects because of Memorial. And people walking on Memorial or riding their bikes on Memorial, you close Memorial sidewalk, we're, they're in the street and we just would really like, when we come up with the staging plan, to not ever close Memorial, the sidewalk on Memorial. That will, that will help us to an extent. And to close anything that we have that's presented to James about, about closing Madison, the sidewalks on Madison, never both of them, sidewalks on Bangs, I guess that Madison would be the biggest concern, to not close those sidewalks if you can absolutely avoid it because of the pedestrian traffic. We already have an issue on the quarter of Madison and Memorial, we already have an issue. So anything you could do to keep those sidewalks open would be really helpful to this project. I know that we have quite a few.
Let me just ask one question. Just ballpark, in a perfect world, applying for the ASPIRE tax credits, when do you think you would break ground?
Uh.
Fall.
If everything goes perfect?
If everything goes well.
I was just trying to see.
Yeah, when do we think that the firehouse is going to be?
18 months.
From here?
I think we're saying spring next year, firehouse?
To be done. Yeah, having them done at the same time is... That's going to be the worst.
Yeah, but I'm just curious.
Case scenario. Okay.
James, is there room on Memorial for like a protected area? Put up like a little barricades, make the shoulder a pedestrian?
Now, with the current layout, it's only really maybe four feet on that little shoulder, and I wouldn't put pedestrians in it.
Because of bikes.
Except that if they're building, it's a more... I don't think they're going to need to close the sidewalks of Memorial. But I think we'll have a straight shot by crossing from Bangs to Cookman. When it comes to Cookman, Madison, Bangs, I'm not going to let them in their staging plan, close both at the same time. You'll have to have signage, tell them where to cross, where the curbs are. It has their project, the problems of the projects. Unfortunately, there are times that I'll pass the clothes. It says temporary stuff. But what he's talking about, I don't think he plans on doing many new curbs to sidewalks, but that's not how I view very seriously what I'm going to have there.
And it's never both sides of Madison?
Yeah, no.
Never both sides?
There has to be walk-in path. We always try to accommodate bicycles and pedestrians when we're doing construction.
Okay. Any other comments from our planning board members? Any comments from our professionals? No? Okay. All right, you want to start off?
Sure, I... There's a whole lot standard for this area. Anything that's not been affected by the prior approval that still exists must be complied with. Okay, I'm just going to give you the gist. These have to be developed, whether Donna or not. Your testimony that there's not going to be any intrusion to any city right away, but I put a clause in that says if there is, you have to take care of it. Report compliance. Any outstanding conditions and recommendations that have been discussed this evening, both Mr. Uro's report, Madonna's report, specific notes that I have, compliance with CCH 11.2, 11.3. I have to check Madonna about discussion of compliance on 11.4. Artwork has to be approved by the city commission. Lighting plans to be amended or developed, maximum 2,700. Architect and engineer must revise their plans for consistency, and a plan must be presented to Donna and to Mr. Uro for accuracy and compliance with the regulations. Put a clause in or a condition in to check Madonna about this, about the street tree addition and street lights along Memorial that we discussed, about potential looking into that to see if it can be done. The applicant must apply any correspondence from the county regarding the improvements within the right-of-way along Memorial to the board secretary, as per the request of Mr. Uro on the record. Lead silver, I'm going to chop this up, I'm going to butcher it because I'm not a planner, but they're going to... The applicant intends to implement the silver lead, and they're going to submit requirements sufficient to the state for that purpose. They're going to provide elements or a portion of whatever is submitted or checklist when it's submitted to the state, it's going to be submitted to the city simultaneously. Essentially, they have to provide proof to the city of compliance with the requirements that were outlined, discussed by Eric. And that's for both pre and post-construction requirements, whatever they might be, that are required before, whatever required afterwards. Install a two-foot quote topper on the dog run fence that runs... That had leaned inward along Memorial Drive for both buildings, wherever there's a dog run there. Staging plan is going to be an extensive condition that I've already developed with James over the last seven or eight projects that has to be reviewed and approved by. So it isn't just a matter of, if you tell him this is what we're going to do, and he has to say yes, that's the group.
Anyone else have anything else that was missed? That was my list.
Did you say the whole thing about the affordable housing administrative agent?
Yes.
You said it, okay.
That's in here?
It's in here as the first set. Yes, yes.
You said that, I'm sorry.
Check Madonna about the administrative agent's approval, discuss with compliance.
Yes. That was like the 11.2, 11.3, 11.4?
Yeah, something like that, yeah. But I thought that in number six.
The only thing I'd say about those dog run toppers, I don't know if two feet is the right height. I don't know if any of us know what the right distance is. I just want them to see if they get some data. And I want it to be taller than four feet, but I don't know. No, we need to specify two feet.
Right, but it will go... It will lean in, so it should...
Why do we have of appropriate height leaning?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Appropriate height leaning in topper. I don't know if two feet is right or not, that's why I don't want to...
That's fair. That's fair.
I don't saw the appropriate topper. The only thing I would add of Memorial, that's all subjective, can't...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, where's that light? So that's subject to county. Yeah, I get that.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, can I get a motion for approval of this application based on with all the conditions that were just set forth?
Move it.
Second.
James Banana?
Yes.
Eric Galpo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonan?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Kurzak?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Both.
Motion...
They get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.